...operated into Memorial Park itself, there's a lot that you could do with a structure like that.
Okay, is that somebody else?
Mayor Johnson.
The additional EPA restriction is something the mayor's been screaming about for the last few years. In your opinion, is that a definite, a maybe, a probable for the phosphorus and the nitrogen?
Predict... Yeah, the phosph... There is a phosphorus regulation right now. It's an interim phosphorus regulation. For any plant that is expanding, the limit will be 1 milligram per liter. So if this plant is going from 1.97 to 3.42, you would be faced with a 1-milligram-per-liter phosphorus limit. The total nitrogen, it's on the radar screen of the regulators. There have been some numbers thrown around, like a 7-milligram-per-liter limit for total nitrogen. I don't know if that is imminent. If you ask EPA, they should say, "Any good plan should include total nitrogen as something that could be implemented," the removal of it. So you should have your process designed hydraulically so you could achieve that in the future.
And how much of your estimated cost is dealing with that issue?
With the total nitrogen alone, it's basically a mixed liquor return pump station, and that cost is about $600,000, Lee. We've got a... About $500,000.
Okay. And you mentioned in your comments about the restrictions of the site, and I know the whole site is in the floodplain. Do you anticipate that's going to be some additional problems if you're going to do an expansion of the plant?
We would definitely have to coordinate with the county on that issue. It's a typical issue for any treatment plant because they're always going to be near water. So in some cases, you can gain a variance from the regulatory body in order to build within the floodplain. It's definitely something that would have to be addressed further on in the planning and in the design stages. But we'd have to work with DuPage County Department of Environmental Concerns on that issue.
And if there was additional property available, which I don't want to be quite as specific as you are, but if there was additional property that was not in the floodplain, I take it that would greatly speed up and simplify the process?
Yes, from a regulatory standpoint, it certainly would streamline things.
Along the lines of flooding, you talked about how there would need to be coordination with the governing body. But do any of these plans and budgets, have you already, at least on some level, addressed, you know, some kind of elimination of flood risk? Because a year and a half ago, we came really close to having to shut the plant down.
Well, this facility won't address anything related to stormwater. It will address excess flow, infiltration, and inflow into your sanitary sewer system. So it won't address the flood issues, per se, from the creek.
And that's what the concern is. So, you know, to coordinate with the county is one thing, and if there were options available, do you see some other design, construction, and structural things that can be done to the site to minimize that risk in the future? I know that wasn't your task for where we needed to get to tonight, but it's going to be a major concern of mine if we're spending $40 million. Have we done anything to try to flood-proof this?
That's to reduce the flood risk at the facility itself. Yes, the design that we have is intended to reduce the likelihood of flooding, the components that we have here. One of the main ones is the most flood-prone portion of it would be your chlorine contact chamber at the final effluent component of the plant now. And going with the UV chamber and the tertiary filtration, those would all be constructed so that they wouldn't be subject to flooding.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, in alternate B3, the membrane bioreactor, does the projected cost include an aesthetically considered building such as the illustration you showed us?
Yes, one of the good things about the building costs itself, it doesn't cost that much more if you're designing a nice-looking building, you know, versus an ugly building. The building costs are very close, believe it or not.
At least in respect to the $40 million-plus price tag, anyway. Okay, thank you.
We just handed out some, a little more detailed cost breakdown when these cost questions are coming up on specific items, just to provide some more information for you. It covers, you know, the alternatives 1, 2, and 3. And included in that are the construction costs, the capital costs, which is what was reflected on those slides. Also included are, to get you a total project cost, would be the engineering cost, and then also a 20-year present value on lifecycle cost, so you could compare the different processes. The MBR plant is, in addition to being higher capital cost, it is a higher O&amp;M cost operations.
Christine Winger.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions, first being the... We just recently did our Thorndale corridor study, and did you get a chance to look at that? And is that the growth that's projected in your capacity numbers?
Yes, we utilized, I believe it was alternative B from the Thorndale corridor study was the one that was selected. And they provided us with the building improvement, or the differences in square footage of the types of buildings that were included in that alternative. So we subtracted out what was being removed, and then we added in what they were proposing to come up with population estimates based on population per square footage of the different type of uses, and then utilized that to determine the flow rates coming into the plant. And that was all part of that, to come up with how much capacity we really needed.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, the population, I know we took the CMAP numbers, and what was the population total, out of curiosity, including daytime as well as permanent people?
That's all included in our first technical memorandum, so we wouldn't have to remember it, so I don't have that number.
Eighteen thousand?
Eleven hundred additional people was what was proposed just for the CMAP expansion, or the 2030 expansion.
Okay, thank you.
Hold me short. You have a comment? Okay. New Zealand Police.
Going back to this, these numbers you just gave us here, so the prices we received before were just the plant itself, the expansion of the plant, their renovation. And then under here, we got engineering costs and then the operation and maintenance costs. The operation and maintenance, did you just say that's a 20-year cost, or?
That's a net present value for a 20-year operating period, yes. Brought back to current dollars.
So for the recommended alternative, you show $6 million, that's what you're saying it would cost to run for 20 approximately?
In today's dollars, it would cost about $6,661,000.
And as far as the membrane bioreactor, that would be $10 million.
$10,773,000, yes. And a lot of that's the multiple pumping and the more aeration, more horsepower of...
As far as this membrane bioreactor, it's just been around, you said it's fairly new. When we say fairly new, we talk in three years, 10 years?
11 years for the first in, you know, for domestic sewage treatment. The first membranes were installed 11 years ago.
And as far as longevity, a lot of maintenance problems, a lot of maintenance issues come up that we, you know, we don't... Let's face it, I know nothing about this stuff, so...
By using the filtration, or pulling it through the membrane itself, it's not really a filtration as much as, you know, pulling it across a membrane, it does have a lot more components to it. One thing about it, though, it is overall an easier plant to operate, but there is more maintenance activities involved. Conventional-activated sludge, the operators have to be, have to know how the plant's behaving because you can have, all of a sudden, your flocks not settling out, and then it's carrying over, and you're exceeding on your TSS, your BOD numbers. With the membrane system, it, the solids can't get through. That being said, there's always some concern, and one reason why, you know, a lot of times you want to stick with a conventional technology is, if for some reason that backs up, that membrane isn't working, it's got nowhere to go. So you will have overflows at your plant. Whereas in a conventional plant with the clarifiers, it will always flow out by gravity in this case, so it's always got a way to go. So that's one reason why it's not as popular as it could be. It's got a lot more industrial application than it does have domestic sanitary sewage applications. And actually, it's moving over from the industrial field to the, you know, the sanitary field more and more.
Reason I'm asking is, I mean, we're going to spend this money, $30 million, $40 million, and we throw it around like it's a quarter or something. The bottom line is, 20 years from now, when this council's gone, and we just finished, we just made the last payment, are we going to, is the next council going to have to put up another one because something, we didn't foresee any, anything?
Technology that was very popular in the 1970s, rotating biological contactors, RBCs. It was state-of-the-art at the time. You don't see any of them being built anymore, and you see them being abandoned as quickly as the operators can because they found out there were some problems with it. You know, it took about 20 years, and then they could, you know, started, you know, the problems were really coming up. So that's an example of a new technology being implemented and not knowing what all the potential problems might be.
So this could happen to the membrane one, what you're telling me?
Might not, based on the, especially the industrial applications, it's a very good process. It really is. But a lot of engineers really like the conventional-activated sludge with clarifiers. That's been around for, how many years, Mark?
Since the early 1900s.
Yeah, it's got over 100 years of operating history. It's very dependable.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Johnson. Actually, I'd like to hear from our plant manager.
Any questions for them, though, we can ask our staff.
After the plant manager answers, I may have some questions for them, but however you want to... No, I'll defer to you. However you want to do it.
No, that's fine. Brad wants you to...
Do you agree with their recommendations on the South plant, that it needs a pump upgrade? And do you agree with alternate B2?
Yes, South plant right now is under capacity, and we don't see expansion in that area or that sanitary area for that plant. So the declassification down below 1 million, design average flow, makes a lot of sense. As far as the alternates, the tertiary treatment option seems about the best, although I did have a comment about the RBCs. The RBCs are a biological process. The membrane plants are more of a mechanical process. So I would believe that there would be a lot, not the same type of problems that they had with the RBCs.
RBCs, they were, tore out the shafts, and then sometimes excessive slopping. So there was, you know, different problems with it. That was just, not really a technology comparison, but just one where it was state-of-the-art, and a lot of that installed, and all of a sudden, people found something's wrong with it. But that being said, the membrane, though, does have a much larger industrial application base to demonstrate that it does work well.
And basically, with alternate B, you have clarifiers, again, and most of the operators' day is spent cleaning weirs, things like that, more of an upkeep-type, besides operating the biological process. Whereas a membrane plant is, as Ed said, more of a maintenance-type plant. Your guys are doing more maintenance than they are actually physically cleaning and maintaining a biological process.
Keeping it simple, you're saying B2?
Yeah.
Okay. And eliminating the public works facility, what's that building used for?
Is John.
John, could you answer that question?
Currently, that public works building uses our, houses our utilities facility, and that's eight staff members and about 16 pieces of large-scale equipment that's currently kept inside. If that building was displaced, those 16 pieces of equipment and eight employees would need to find refuge somewhere else undercover.
This question's going to put John or Brad or both of you on the spot, and it's not what I intended it to do, but it just popped into my head. So I'm looking at these 20-year projected costs on the three alternatives. Not that a fourth alternative is to do nothing, I think we all agree that that's not possible. But just as a point of reference, approximately, what would our 20-year projected cost be on the existing plants that we have? So I know how these $6 to $10 million figures cross-reference against that.
Right now, our electrical use at the North plant is probably $150,000 a year, and our chemical use is about $20,000 a year. Yeah, I don't have a calculator on me, so... That doesn't include electrical costs at the South plant or any of the lift stations, it's just strictly North.
Okay, and these costs are strictly North because that's the focus of your study? Okay.
I have a... Anyone else have any questions? If not, I'll ask my questions. The, for once, I know I'm not in favor of moving the Veterans Park at all. I don't know how everyone feels about that, so if I'm concerned, that's a no-go for me. My question is, I think the concern that I have is having those tanks up on Irving Park Road the way they are. I know you can hide them, but my question is, if you hide them with bushes and shrubs and everything else, who's going to maintain all that shrub and work? And, you know, that's my concern on that one. So here's the situation. I should, as you know, we, my opinion, I don't think we'll make a decision tonight which treatment plan or what we will do tonight on this project at all. I don't know. It was a presentation tonight, and what I'd like to do is let the council soak this in and look at all the literature and all that. And then, any other questions, direct them to staff, and then they will contact them for any other questions, comments that we may have, and they will give us an email or something back in our packet on the questions that we have asked. My goal, as chairman of this committee, is to, I calculate that this treatment plant, if we give a go-ahead, it's going to take four to five years to complete, up and running, time we get the permits and everything else. In the meantime, I'd like to hold this off, make a final decision, give us time to think this out. Meanwhile, we could look at, maybe next month, bring in the expert into possibly funding these sources and how we could do this, providing that the finance department asks for that. So next month, I would last, ask the finance to put on their agenda that we have a man come out and give us update on how we could fund this and other future things. The other, meanwhile, if we choose to go with one of these plans, we really need to start looking and attracting staff to look at replacing that building and to go out and look for a building. My suggestion is that we go out, if we choose to go with one of these options that eliminates that public works building, my suggestion is, since the other public works building is out, almost outgrown, I would recommend that staff goes out and look for a building that's big enough to house both divisions and combine both divisions under one roof due to the fact is that the other plant is part of the Thorndale corridor study. So if we do it all at once, we just do one big-ticket item, and whatever fund we decide go with to buy this. So I think there's two options we have to look at here. We have to look at replacing a public works building at the same time, and we have to look at upgrading this treatment plant. My opinion, guys, the price tags are high. It is nothing that we cannot hold off any longer. That treatment plant is really old. We are having problems getting parts to replace. It's a big decision here. It really is. And I think we need to look at every option that we can for this treatment plant. So my recommendation is that we hold this off for our final decision, and therefore we could look at and answer some more questions, because, I mean, it was a very nice presentation. We did answer some questions, but I'd like to make a decision on this treatment plant February, March. It's a go or no-go, due to the fact is it's going to take five years to get this off the ground. It's going to take, what are we looking for permits? A year and a half, two years for permits? So I would recommend that we make a decision February, March, and we don't drag this thing out, like five, 10 years. We've got to make the decision. So that would be my recommendation. So anyone else have any comments on that?
Did want to just go over very quickly of what the next steps would be in the whole process.
Okay, hang on one sec. New Zealand Police.
Brad, quick question for you. Our plants right now are at 3.2, and what percentage, I think we mentioned this once before, but I heard, one time I heard 90%, another time I heard 80%. Where are we at? On a day, regular, daily?
Our design average is 1.97 or just under 2 million. We are about right there. We're about 1.8 to 1.9 design average. It's about $100,000 less than our design average.
Oh, so we're, so we're not at 80% like I was hearing?
No, we're a little, we're about 95, 90, 95.
All right.
We have the extra capacity at South plant. That's why we're not on restricted status, so it compensates.
No, but we're at 3.2, and we're, you're saying we're using, oh, you're just talking about the one plant?
One plant, yeah, because basically, they were talking about just upgrading the one plant.
So the North plant is at about 90%?
Right.
Okay, I got you.
Go ahead and say our next phase here, what...
Yeah, the next steps on this would be finalize the current planning document. That would be, you know, select an alternative and then complete that. And the report that this accompanies this would be the technical supporting for a facility plan amendment, which would be the next step for getting approval from CMAP and then to IAPA. Then the NPDS permitting process, because you're asking to modify both permits with the public hearings and everything that's involved in that. And then implementing the whole thing, design and construction. So it supports the timetable that you're saying, this is a, you know, it's a four-year project to put a shovel in the ground on something like this by the time you complete the FPA and the NPDS permitting and the design.
Okay. Four-year project. The other reason why I really think we need to make the decision on this in February, March, is be, typical reason is, construction cost is still down. There's possibility that if we have a plan in place, there's grant money that is available out there, hopefully to go after in the stimulus package if there's any more money left there, or any other funding that may come down the pipe. Right now, we cannot even go after any grant money until we have a design in hand, which one we're going with. So that's why I'm saying that it needs to be addressed.
You brought up the issue of funding possibilities. We just added this slide in to discuss some of that, to give you an idea of, one of the most readily available is your state revolving loan fund. And for the different alternatives, under what they had been charging for the annual payments, this would be an idea of what the debt service would be for the construction cost on those alternatives. That being said, the ARRA funding, which has come in and subsidized the state revolving loan fund, is how it's been implemented, at least this year, potentially next year, and possibly in the future from there. So the sooner you can get in, if you're going to try to go for any stimulus funding, the better. So that's always something to consider. And what they're doing, or they did this year, was basically a 25% grant, 75% you had to fund, but it was also a 0% interest for all that. That's much better than the 2%, 2.5% that a typical state revolving loan fund program cost. But then there are other grants that might be available, EPA, FEMA, Department of Homeland Security, DHS, for, if not all of the plant, at least parts of it, like DHS for eliminating the chlorine gas component of your system. So there may be, you know, some funding sources out there. Something to consider also would be TIF funding, since you're looking at the Thorndale corridor expansion as creating most of the need for expanding the capacity. You know, it's not in the TIF area, but it would directly affect or impact that, so that might be an option to consider also.
Okay. Does anyone have any more questions for the presenters? Mayor Johnson?
Would you expand a little bit? What's the FEMA program we can apply for? I'm not familiar with that.
Under FEMA, for some of the flood protection, if we can enhance some of the flood protection capacities at the plant, there may be some opportunity for funding there. Again, those wouldn't be nearly at the scale or capacity of the SRF funding, but every little bit helps when you're trying to finance a project like this.
Any other questions for the presenters? Well, Mayor, do I have to make a motion to take this back to committee in March or April? I mean, February, March, or?
Make that motion.
All right, well, I will make a motion to put on the agenda in February, March to finalize a decision, whatever direction we may go. In the meantime, I will ask the staff to, or the staff to look into some grant opportunities on any decisions that we can make, too. So that is my motion. Do I have a second? Question. All in favor? Aye. Pose. I think it passes, doesn't matter.
You could pass it, but I think it should be earlier than February, March. I think it should be after the first of the year.
Well, then, we'll do it future meetings, then. The problem is, we need to start working on a budget and find out where we're going to get the money. That's my, Wally, could you, do you think, you think that will be feasible, or you think January? I mean, I'm just giving them the time, work on some funding for this.
I would think we can shoot for the meeting of January the 28th. Mr. Wilson and I have already had some preliminary discussions with our financial advisors. I had a meeting yesterday with the representative from Congressman Roskam's office to talk about financial alternatives. I'd like to build that into the discussion at the same time as we finalize this. So we can shoot for January 28th, and if that doesn't work, we can move it back another two weeks. I think that'll give us plenty of time.
Will we hear from, so you're doing a negotiation for how we're going to fund this?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask our financial advisor to come in on the 28th and give you his ideas in terms of the kinds of financing that he sees out there. Hopefully, by the same time, I'll get something back from Congressman Roskam's office in terms of what might be available in Washington.
Okay, the only drawback I have on that is January 28th, we come in, we get a guy that comes in, gives us a presentation of finance, and all of a sudden, we've got to make a decision, the 28th or 29th, we're going with the treatment plant.
No, you don't have to make that decision on the 28th. I think we can shoot to bring you guys, bring them in, and give you an idea of what's out there at a meeting on the 28th, but that doesn't mean you have to make that decision that night. If you need some more time after that, that's fine.
All right, but I am shooting to get something done. All right, but I am shooting to get something done, February, that would start break ground or something.
January, January 14th, we're going to be talking to you all about the five-year capital improvement program. That's going to take a couple hours by itself. So I, I think we're probably better off moving it to the 28th where we can devote the time that we need.
All right. January 20th, then, on the agenda. Okay, I thank you for coming. Any other questions before you leave? Sam Loten?
Would you tell me how many years it takes to repay column A and column B at 0% interest? Is it 20 years?
The, the terms that are used to calculate that annual payment, here's a 20-year loan, two payments per year at 2.5% interest rate.
I thought you said it was at 0%.
No, that's with the ARRA funding, that was this year how the loan program was administered. Was with 25% of the capital cost was a 0% grant essentially.
And Alderman, Eugene Wesley, any of the grant money that we get, does it have to be applied as down payment or can it be used to make installment payments?
First of all, I don't know what grant money, how it has to be spent. Usually when you get a grant, it tells you what, how it's got to be spent and how much you have to put up and how much there share is and all that. Each grant is different, depends on the way it's worded and where we get the grant from. I can't answer that question because I don't know. It all depends on the way the grant's written.
I can give you one example of a combination of SRF funding and a grant for the Village of Richmond for construction of their wastewater plant. On there, they had a total construction cost of 8.2 million. They did get about a $1.7 million grant and the rest they funded with an SRF loan at about the 2.5% interest.
So the money went to the down payment then?
Money went to capital costs first. Grant money was spent on capital cost and then loan money was spent for the remaining capital cost.
I just make a reminder to everybody that under an enterprise fund, which the water fund is now, the money has to be earned in order to provide for the expense. The money cannot come from general revenue. Therefore, whatever you, we decide on, it's going to be put right into the bills that go out to everybody that consumes water. I think we ought to have staff give us a breakdown of what the rates would have to be just to cover these three different proposals. Do you think that's a good idea, Eugene?
Well, I think the problem is let's, let's staff come up with the numbers because they're going to have to come up with the numbers with the, the finance guy that's coming out to do a presentation and calculate it all together.
So you could, I mean, I'm not pushing today. I mean, next February, the 28th, I mean, January, the 28th?
Yeah, I mean, if they can have it done by then, that's fine. That's fine. I have no problem doing that. And Wally just nodded, said he had no problem, so. All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you for coming and.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll take it from there. Could we, you want to take a? We're going to take a five-minute recess because our fingers are making. Go ahead. Make the minute taker note that same people are present. Item five is report, street improvement payment number five, final to Arrow Road Construction, That is my motion to pay that. Do I have a second on that motion? You need, hello? Question?
This is all the streets.
Question? This is. Arrow Construction. Resurfacing?
This is last year's resurfacing program, the 2008 program.
So what?
Alman Sher. Does this include Potter? By Prospect?
This included Potter between Cedar and Cotelpa and Potter between Addison and Station.
Addison and what?
Station.
Station, correct.
Okay. Just recently, they did the street on Potter right by, just east of Prospect and they did a part of it, I don't know, 50, 100 feet that was all hilly and they took that out and replaced it? Now that's cracking up again.
That wasn't this contract.
No, this is 2008.
Yeah, that's what I'm checking. Which one is that?
Might have been 2006, but I'd have to check.
I thought it was just last year.
No, this only went to, from Addison Road to Station and Prospect would be west of that.
Right.
So this did not, the 2008 job did not include that.
I'll talk to you afterwards and find out exactly what it was because the street's already breaking up over there and I'd like to find out if we're still under warranty. Thank you.
Alman Roy Wesley?
Could we get, when we get these payments, could we get a list of what these streets are, resurfacing or what? All I see is street improvements and it doesn't tell me what streets they are. And you're saying it's 2008?
2008, correct.
How do I know that?
Says it.
It, it says that, but how do I know what streets they were?
I guess you'd have to ask me. I do have the list here, but I didn't include it.
Could we get, when we get the statement, when we get these things like this, could we get a list of that too, of what we're paying out, so?
Sure, I can provide them.